7:01.
Call the meeting to order at 7:01. Before we get started, I'm going to read the rules of conduct for hybrid virtual meeting. This meeting will be held both in person and virtual. This session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will generally remain unmute, except when speaking or voting, and will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public joining virtually creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the first selection. For public input before the meeting, please email your comments to publicinput@columbia.org and then 24 hours before the meeting. If attending virtually, public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature. In or wave your hand and request your mic be unmuted. Please include in both message your name and address. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well.
The next item is the approval of agenda. I move that we amend the agenda to add 9.4 appointment of animal control officer Mike Olzacki, and appointments of assistant animal control officers Gerald Cludier, Allison Lu, and Jessica Andrew. Right here, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chris will not.
Did he raise his hand?
He didn't.
Yeah, I did.
Next item is approval of minutes. I move that we approve the minutes of January 4th, 2022. Any changes or additions to that?
Yes.
Did Chris say he had a change?
Yes, I do. So on the front page, the member present remotely, I think we need to strike out Stephen M. Everett because my recollection was he was in person on the last meeting we had.
Oh, yeah, it has him twice.
It has him twice. So was he here or was he not?
He was, he was here. I wasn't here.
Yeah, so he's, he's just, he was here universally. It was almost virtually.
My other question, Mark, weren't you remotely on that meeting?
Yes. Yes, he was.
Yeah, you were.
All right, so Stephen's out and I'm in.
Right.
Remotely.
Good catch.
Any other revisions? I'll amend my motion. I move that we approve the agenda of January 4th, 2022 as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. There's no old business, new business. Zangari Cone, Hunter Burton, Duel, and.
Audience of citizens.
Oh, audiences versus.
I guess audience of citizens.
No, no, yeah, that comes right before all this.
There's two.
Anybody?
Do you want me to speak now to my concerns or wait until you now? Okay. When the special permit was adopted and accepted in July and August of 2021, teens did not review the plan of development and conservation to see how this special permit would mesh with the plan of development and conservation. And I believe that this special permit was not correctly adopted and hence is not a valid special permit and needs to go back and be reviewed in view of the plan of development and conservation. I also gave you a copy of the definition of spot development and this kind of buttonholes exactly what's going on. 79 Kinsmore Road, that a single individual is trying to change what's happening out of parcel of land without consideration to what's going on with the neighbors and how they feel about it.
Well, I'm kind of, I don't feel like I have a full picture of what's going on.
Oh, they're putting in a wedding and event facility there. And most, if not all, the neighbors are, well, I know of one person who is not opposed to it, but she works for Mr. Gates and lives in a house right next to the property, which I believe she rents from him.
Okay.
But people in the area, when we bought our properties and built our homes or bought our homes, anticipated living in a rural country, quiet setting, not in a commercial or an area that would have commercial activity.
Okay.
And we're concerned that the roads are narrow, steep, windy, with very poor lines of sight in many places and that there are going to be people that were going to be drinking. And now that marijuana is legal in the state of Connecticut, the bribe room could provide marijuana growlings and they could be stoned as well. And that's a concern when you have grandchildren running around your property, that someone might be out of the influence and cause an accident that might injure yourself or your grandchildren or any other member of the family or anyone who's visiting.
And can I interrupt a second, Carol? Just so, board, this is presently in public hearing, planning zone. So we can't comment during the public hearing portion. We can listen and take in concerns, which is perfectly all right during the discussion. But we can't have a whole discussion right now until this comes out of public here.
Because it's more of a planning zoning.
Yes, this is a planning zoning preview, purview at the moment. You don't have any say or influence.
Right, but I, don't you have a say if they went and adopted a special permit without going through the proper chance, proper procedures?
And that's what's being debated and that's why we can't comment. But behind the scenes, I can do all I can to make sure we're okay.
Okay.
We cannot discuss it.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to bring to your attention.
And your concerns haven't brought to the attention of the town council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Okay, Carol breaks as if he embraced.
I have to unmute.
No, I'm here.
Carol?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Thank you for taking the time to listen. I know probably most of us never show up because we just kind of trust that you guys are taking care of things and really don't have to worry about anything. And I think, as you can tell from the number of us here, we're seriously concerned that our planning and zoning commission has gone to the fork in the road and done a complete 180 and then a 360 and then looped out into space. I know I'm being a little bit facetious, but I sent a letter to the planning and zoning about how they adopted the regulation amendment that allows the wedding event, they call it wedding event, events within the RA district. I did see Mr. Everett on that letter and I had hoped it would, it would be added to your packet. It explains some of the legal concerns that I had regarding how that regulation amendment was adopted. I don't believe it complied with state law. I'd be happy to send that up to you, Mr. Walter, if that would help. But I do think you should have that if you don't already. The reg amendment that they adopted on behalf of the applicant valley, what is it, Valley Viewers, whatever they're called, I'll call it, call it Mr. Gates. It's easier. We all know that's who is behind the application. Was submitted in June of this, of 2021. Now, at the same time, the planning and zoning commission had three or four other regulation revisions on their agenda relating to multifamily housing, cannabis, and I believe watershed, Lakeshore District type, something like that. In any event, those reg revisions have been proceeding along of pace. They've had discussion in months. It wasn't until just this last agenda that they actually even had language being proposed for the multifamily housing. They did what I would consider a thorough, normal process for adopting or considering regulation amendments and whether or not to adopt them. I'm going to contrast that to this one for the, allowing the event hall of facilities within an RA district. It was submitted in June, public hearing was held in July, and it was adopted in August. They didn't consider any of the factors that a zoning commission should consider when they are adopting a regulation amendment. They didn't check that it was in accordance with the comprehensive plan and in accordance with the, or taking into consideration the plan of conservation and development. I don't think anybody here could honestly say that a wedding hall event facility is compatible with an RA district. If you look at the special permit list of things that are allowed in RA district, home occupations, playgrounds, summer camps, daycare centers, elderly housing, bed and breakfast, riding arenas, farm winery. All of those are tied to a residential activity. They're not substantial disturbances to the neighborhood. The contrast that to a wedding hall where the discussion for traffic had to consider whether or not you'd need a state trooper outside the driveway at the end of an event to prevent problems from occurring. I'm sorry, but there's no accountant with a home business that has to, has to need a state trooper outside their driveway because that use is compatible with an RA zone. I don't think the planning and zoning commission did their job. It's certainly under state law, 8-2, Connecticut general statute, 8-2. Regum, regum, excuse me, zoning regs have to be adopted, have to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan and in consideration of the plan of conservation. Has to be designed to lessen congestion in the streets. By definition, they have already admitted they're adding at a minimum 85 cars to traffic. It's supposed to promote health and general welfare. I don't know how you're going to claim where we need a state trooper or they need to put signage up so that they avoid curvy roads because the drivers are going to be too dangerous? How is that promoting health and general welfare? Consider the impact of the permitted land use on contiguous municipalities and the planning region in which the municipality is located. This is on the 10 Mile River that borders Lebanon. It's part of the airline trail. It's a beautiful area. The final one is that it's supposed to actually be encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout a municipality. And it's supposed to be drafted with consideration as to the physical site characteristics of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses. You folks have a plan of conservation and development that identified several commercial corridors, Route 6, Route 66, and you have the mixed use in the center of town. You didn't, when you adopted this plan of conservation and development in 2016, you didn't say, oh, by the way, we're going to do these reg amendments and allow special permits to get passed zoning law so that you could put commercial activities in the middle of a RA district. You look at the minutes from that July meeting, all they discussed was this project, the one that Gates wants to build. They didn't discuss how would this impact every RA district within the town. It was specifically referring to this project. That is what Carol Williamson referred to as spot zoning, where you are taking into account only a small piece of land and for its benefit. That's spot zoning and that's what they did. And that reg amendment never should have been approved the way it was. It never, it didn't follow procedure and substantively it never should have passed. Then you get to the actual application. Somehow inland wetlands, wetlands agents signed off on this without even a wetlands map. There is no, there's no flagging of wetlands on this property and yet it's a peninsula that, that juts out into the 10 Mile River. Her comment to me in an email was she didn't consider it substantial activity. Well, my question is, how on earth would you know it's substantial activity if you don't even know where the wetlands are? Your own maps, I'm looking at them, show that that's wetlands all along that peninsula. And those maps, we all know, are notoriously conservative. That's, that's bottom land. I suspect the whole thing is wetlands, soils. Again, procedurally, inland wetlands commission is not doing their job if they allow a wetlands agent to sign off on regulated activity within 200 feet of the 10 Mile River without a commission vote. To let the wetlands agents sign off on significant commercial activity like this without even a wetlands map, no soil scientist. Again, procedurally, very deficient and very disappointing for this town. Our taxes are going to pay people to do their jobs and that's what we expect. Going back to the special permit application, it got submitted on November 3rd and was approved or as complete, accepted as complete by the planning and zoning commission on November 8th at their meeting. It didn't have a lighting plan. It didn't have a septic plan. It didn't have a traffic study. It didn't have any of the details relating to this tent that they were going to construct, how it was going to be soundproofed. It was missing virtually every substantial piece of information. Ms. Dahl even admitted she missed the lighting study. I'm like, well, you missed a few other things too. They should never have voted to approve, accept the application as complete. We had to start public hearings because there's a 65 day time limit on essentially an incomplete application. They still haven't submitted the lighting package. They're going to have a third round of public hearings. The applicant actually had to extend the deadline for, for vote on their application because they haven't even submitted a complete package. But this is what the planning and zoning commission is doing. Going ahead with an applicant who is racing through the system and basically blasting through every safeguard that we're supposed to have to protect our property and our families. And that's not happening and that's why I'm here. I think that's why Carol's here. I think that's why a number of people are here. Is that they're blowing through this for the benefit of one individual. And that's not right. And I know that the town, the board of selectmen don't, don't have direct purview over applications that are pending, but you certainly do have the authority to look into whether your commissions are acting in accordance with the law. And that's where I'd ask that the town attorney get involved through the board of selectmen and look at, just read the minutes of what happened from June to now. It is ridiculous. And, and I, I mean, I had been a land use attorney. I've represented developers. I know what the rules are and they've done a phenomenal job, the applicant and, and their team, of burrowing through the system as fast as they possibly can. And unfortunately, they had a complacent planning and zoning commission that ignored every procedural safeguard for the benefit of all the others who got poo-pooed by the chairman because, well, otherwise they're going to put in a subdivision. But guess what? Subdivisions are permitted. And because this thing only has like 600 feet of frontage, well, they're only going to put in two or three houses at most. Okay, I don't like losing the prime farmland because that's what that is. It's all, almost all prime farmland soil. It's going to become a gravel parking lot. But that wasn't considered either. Nothing in the plan of conservation and development was approved. And I'm talking way more than I should, but I'm obviously very concerned about the process that was followed here, which was none. And it seems to be benefiting somebody and really hurting a large part of our neighborhood. And I forgot to say, I do live at 61 Johnson Road and do also own land on Gallin Road. Thank you very much.
Here. Any other comments, citizens? Right, sir.
And could you say your name and your address?
Sure. I'm Joseph Stumpf and I live on 4 Bakerville Road and on one property removed from this property in question on the river. I believe that this is spot zoning. This whole process is spot zoning, not a special permit. This is for the sole profit of one person to bring vans, trucks, serving of food and drink, excessive traffic, alcoholic beverages, limousines, parking facilities, microphones, speakers, vendors, buses, delivery vehicles, and signage into our neighborhood. That's my statement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I see Carol waiting in the audience.
I know that many people in town are convinced that this isn't their neighborhood so they're not concerned. But anywhere in town that has a parcel of 25 acres or more can apply for a special permit of this nature. Or it opens the door for many other types of special permits. And you could well have something in your neighborhood that doesn't fit with the residential and agricultural character of your neighborhood. And I think everyone in town needs to be concerned that what the planning and zoning commission is doing by allowing this special permit is opening the door to many other special permits and other types of special permits. And you all need to be concerned and you all need to have your lawyer really look at this, this closely.
Anybody who has to speak would like to speak. Let me just look in chat. Okay, we do not have any in chat and I do not see any answer. I think we're good now.
Okay, thank you. Move on. See, there's no old business, new business. Zangari Cone, Hunter Burton, Duel, and Grelle O. PC, labor attorney rate decrease. What's that all about?
Our labor attorney came on with Carmen over six years ago. Originally it was Seagull and O'Connor and Nick Grelle. Our labor attorney moved to create their own firm, which is this, five names. They've had the same rate for over five years of 215 per hour and the associates at 195 and they wanted to have an increase of $10 an hour. We don't have any unions, so our use of our labor attorneys is very low. We average about 2,000 a year in our labor attorneys.
This, this, but it seems like a reasonable.
Yeah, I think in today's.
Yes, and plus I can.
$10 extremely.
I can say that our labor attorney will answer my phone whenever I call.
That's the other thing, our baby's.
It's so, he's incredibly responsive, so I'd like to continue.
So you need a motion that we continue with this stuff for, at the proposed rate increase?
Yes.
$10 per hour for both partners and associates?
Yes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Chris said that I did.
Appointments and resignations, there's a appointment of A.D. Bellville to the youth services committee. Will there's a letter from the Republican town committee?
Yes.
I can't remember. I believe she's a teacher.
Okay. I move that we approve the appointment of A.D. Bellville to the youth services committee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next is appointment of Lisa Dondak to the economic development commission.
Rob will be here. Yes, to start.
Now, according to the letter that we were sent by jail ball again, she wanted to be a member of the direct commission and the EDC.
And we didn't have any openings in that at the moment, so.
Who's late on it? Is there anything to bother? I miss it. I was sick. I don't know nothing. That was fun. I missed that.
I move that we approve the appointment of Lisa Dondak to the economic development commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we decline the resignation of Robert Hellstrom.
I said that.
All with regrets.
I move we approve, to approve, Rob Hellstrom's resignation from the state department.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrator's report.
And I'll just tell you, there were a few other nominations that came down from the RTC, but we had more people than the committee could hold. So we're sending those people to the committees to actually do a meeting and, and get the feedback from the chairs. I just wanted to tell you in case anybody gets back to you what happened to A.B. and C. Kennedy. So we're working on.
It's nice that we're able to start drawing.
Oh, Bill, would you jump back to 9.4 that we added and just officially make a motion for the animal control officers?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
9.4, I move that we approve, we appoint animal control officer Michael Olzacki and appoint assistant animal control officers Gerald Cludier, Allison Lu, and Jessica Andrew. Mark, what can you tell us about?
Mike, I hired Mike 15 years ago to run the East Adam Animal Control. After we went through a lot of animal control officers, I found Mike and he, he was great. And then East Hamptons had problems and we created a regional. Right now, Mike said that he and his team could cover Columbia. So we're, we're going to have them cover us. And I'm talking to Heburn about a possible joining Columbia and Heburn into a regional.
This is what we discussed at the last meeting.
Yes, you gave me authorization to go forward with.
For six months, right?
Right, well, I wait for Heburn because their animal control officers retire in July 1. But Heburn and I, we can have to come up with something long before that in the budget process. Then I'll get back to you with.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrator's report.
So our COVID-19 state distribution that we held last week, it was last Thursday evening, it went perfect. Everyone who signed up arrived pretty much when they had signed up. We never had more than six cars in line, ever. Everybody just zipped right through, got their masks and their test kits and off they went. So they came in here, went all the way around, split into two lines, got their kits and then left. So we were able to easily do 150 cars an hour. I think we could do 250 an hour, no problem. So.
You had a lot more requests than what we had.
No, not a lot. We have put in for another distribution and now free test kits are available online. If you Google it, the state is actually mailing them straight to your home.
Right, I have signed up today.
Right, so I think with one more distribution and the free kits that can come via, I think we'll hit the big curve.
I've got all the people like me who got positive who don't need to anymore. Well, well, these number six months, they figure at least the natural immunity, six, nine months.
And now it's COVID's going through the school. I get the reports quite a bit.
I'm surprised.
And it's sitting in our kind of place too, so we're all.
Teachers and kids. Half of our, half our child parents has had it.
We're just waiting for this last hope batch to go through and get back to life. ARPA update, we got some good news. I haven't gotten details yet, but the state and that's American Rescue Plan has relaxed the qualifications for what ARPA money can be used for, down to almost anything that you would normally buy through the municipal process. So that should really help us handle some things that are in the pipeline that we weren't sure would qualify. So I'll keep my ears tuned. I am going to bring some recommendations to our next board of select meeting. I've got some more requests from the fire department that we could get in the works. And by that time, I've had my capital request, our department heads, and kind of get a feel for what we normally go through the budget and what is outside the budget we should consider.
How much money we can sum up?
We, we, we got $800,000 first installment and we'll give $800,000 next year. So total of $1,006,000. And we've authorized $471,000 so far.
Just updating, updating my brain, what have you, we used the 471, so we used it on Red Park, right?
We Red Park, we did a generator senior center. We Red Park, we did a generator senior center, we did HVAC for the Fire Department, exhaust system for the Fire Department for the equipment, the building, HVAC for this building. And what else?
Was Hawk River on that, the Culver on?
No, but we also got more really good news on the Hawk River. I don't have confirmation yet, but there's a chance that the state will not make us do our state contribution to the federal money coming to do the Hawk River. So it was an 80/20 split where the towns had to come up with 20%, the feds are coming up with 80, the state might pay our 20%. So just keep your fingers crossed on that. That's an expensive bridge.
Yeah.
So it's a fluid-moving target. Waiting to have some web meetings to... I did get a write-up from our town attorneys, and as soon as I pull it all together, I'll get it to the board by next week. And friends of Monopon, I have not had a chance to follow up with Paul Ramsey. We led that. Did you go, Julie, by any chance?
No.
So I know they had a meeting here to try to start all the proper paperwork, to have a volunteer group to help maintain Monopon, so that's, they had their kickoff. I still need to get further information, and that's all I have.
What are they talking about, like trail maintenance and that?
Yeah, and it might be pond maintenance and partnering with the NEMBOs or the New England Mountain Bike Association and trying to link Monopon to the airline trail.
Great idea.
Yes.
It's already almost there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's got to get through a wetlands.
Unless they go up and over the, they can go up and over through the.
Right, right, right.
A walk back. It's actually a really nice walk back.
Joe, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir. Do we, back to the animal control, like may, do we support that effort with equipment?
Yes.
Vehicles or?
We don't have a vehicle yet, but that is in part of my long-range planning because we really do need one.
Thank you.
And we have a pound which needs some upgrade. And we have dog catching and poles and that kind of equipment. But we're getting there. We're trying to become a really animal control.
In your package, you have correspondence from the state police.
Yes, sir.
Kind of volunteer for our department and articles from the law manecent, which I'll let you read. Read your, move on to budget. There doesn't appear to be any transfers?
Correct.
Just refunds? Refunds or total refund for 54337?
That's the total of the.
Yes, I move that we approve refunds in the amount of 54337. Any discussion?
I'm excited all for cars that we sold here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Give it a bill. I move that we pay their bills in the amount of $62,442.43 sets. Any discussion?
So have we poured the foundations for?
Both, both before.
Both for the garage and rec?
Yes, we got it in before the.
That's awesome. They got whole. I was wondering.
That's whole, thanks.
I was wondering if you all got that done, Cass. That's cool. That's great.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Some of us are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second, audience, citizens, if anybody else who hasn't spoken so far would like to speak?
Nothing in chat, Bill, and we also did not get anything in Susan's input. And.
Yes, Sandra?
Sandra Meyer is there, but I cannot see a hand.
We see something moving around her. Who's handing it out?
Oh, that's my hand.
Is there something you'd like to say?
He's just moving around.
Put it right there and then move.
You have to be polite, Matthew.
Okay, I think we're all set. Okay.
Any more and every time.
Really appreciate, actually, that we did the distribution. I know that there was a friend of mine who was quite relieved.
And big kudos, kudos, or thanks. Can you say kudo?
Kudos.
Kudos to Jen Lavoy and Mark Bolza. They really led all the technical help to get everybody signed up through Red Park and that software system once we got it going. Mark was sitting at the line with his iPad, just checking people up.
That's awesome.
And he assisted with hard copy and went real fast.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it went very smoothly.
Steven was traffic director, and the volunteer fire department was out.
Yeah, it went smoothly. It's great.
To make a motion that we have a brief executive session.
Okay. And that'll be, who do you want invited?
Justin Swann.
Okay, so I don't have to go?
You're welcome to speak.
Okay. And that is at 7:38. Now turn off the recording.
I have to comment. You guys have a really nice meeting.
We exited executive session at 7:47 with no action. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Thank you.
And Phil, if I, you need that motion.